Move the minutes of September 11, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of September 11, 2017, regular meeting as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Very good. Next item, it's past the hour of seven o'clock, we have a hearing to set fees for plowing and sanding private ways for the upcoming 2017-2018 winter season. Scott Sharpontier, the DPW Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all of the board members. Oh, it's almost plow season again, almost salt season again. We actually processed our first snow and ice invoice this week, so it's coming. One of our annual tasks, amongst many other ones, getting ready for the storm, is establishing our plow rates for the two private streets we help maintain. They are Harris Ave and Maple Lane. We have a standing policy that was amended recently in relevance to the updated rates. We're proposing a fee increase of $5 or approximately 2.6 percent to treat and to plow each street for each event. The rates have been going up $5 per year for a number of years in an effort to keep up with the cost of inflation. A 2.6 percent annual increase is right along those lines.
And the residents of the streets are, are they on board already, or this is the setting of the policy and then they'll subscribe?
They're aware. We sent out two notices, one on September 5th, another one on, I want to say, September 20th, to the residents, letting them know about the meeting, letting them know about the rate changes, the updated policy was attached pending approval, so they're aware of it. We did receive a call from one resident, we explained to them it's a public safety issue and we can't, you know, not treat with salt, we need to do both in order for it to be safe. They understood.
Very good. This is a hearing, is this a?
It's a meeting. It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, yeah. Any questions from the board? Don?
In the past, we've done a lot more streets than this. Are these the only two that we did last year?
These are the only two we have remaining, yes. These are the only two we did last year as well, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie?
I just wanted to thank you for explaining that because I don't want people to think that we just automatically go up five bucks every year, that there is a reason for that, it's just not an automatic, because it's, you're right, that has been the trend, that it's, it goes up every year, and I just don't want people to assume it's automatic, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just one comment. This is a voluntary program, so this got started at the request of the residents, so these folks are not required to do this, but if they don't, then they have to make sure that their roads are plowed and sanded in a manner that would allow public safety to get access. So, you know, this is at the request of the residents. Some of the smaller streets, you know, have come to other arrangements, could be somebody, you could have a contractor that moves onto the street and plows snow for a living and he can, or she can do it for less than we can do it, potentially, but these are the streets that have asked for the service, and again, they're not required to take it, they're, you know, we're providing this as a means to just simplify things for them.
Okay, thank you, John. Bill?
Yes, I think $195 is very cheap, to be honest with you, for safety. I mean, you, the guys are there, you do the job, you salt, you treat it, it's safe, very, very good price.
Thank you. Good value. Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to set the fees for plowing and treatment of private ways less than 3,000 feet for the 2017-2018 winter season as follows, $195 per storm per private way for plowing, and $195 per storm per private way for treatment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members.
It's now past the hour of 7:05 PM, we have White Cliffs purchase and sale. Update regarding remediation of underground storage tank, approval execution of advance in lieu of borrowing, acceptance and execution of deed, and discussion regarding formation of reuse committee. John?
I've got great news. I know it's been a long haul, if those of you that were around at town meeting last year, under Article 42 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting, the decision was made to purchase White Cliffs. Shortly thereafter, the town, as part of its due diligence, under the purchase and sale agreement, did some investigatory work known as a 21E, essentially went in and looked for any hazardous materials or issues that would prevent us from acquiring the facility. We did discover as part of that, an underground storage tank off the back of the property that contained oil, that oil had in fact leaked, and so it was up to the seller to remediate that situation. So, actually, our purchase and sale had a closing of September 21st of last year, originally, and so it's taken from September of last year to pretty much within the last couple of weeks to get that remediation work done and to get all of the reports filed with DEP, and just so that you know, we did actually hire our own LSP, a licensed site professional, to review all the reports and advise the town to make sure things were done correctly and appropriately. So, all of that has taken place, our LSP has signed off on the work, all the reports are with DEP. We did a walkthrough on Monday in anticipation of a closing, and today, we were there inventorying some of the historic fixtures that were removed from the facility and under the purchase and sale, come back to the town as part of the agreement. So, at this point, I don't see any hurdles to us actually moving forward with the closing, and we're anticipating that that will take place this Wednesday, and so in preparation for that, we have a few things that would need to take place this evening. One would be the vote for the, an execution of the advance in lieu of borrowing, and June Hubbard Ward, Finance Director, is here to walk you through that process, which we're going to get to. You actually took this vote already, but it's been so long that you need to take it again because it's expired. After that, we do have the execution and acceptance of the deed, which has been perfected and submitted for your consideration by Town Council, so that's all set. And then, last but not least, now that we own the building, we need to figure out what it is that we're going to do with it. So, on the agenda, as the last item, is a discussion regarding the formation of a reuse committee, what their charge will be, and what the composition of the committee might look like. So, that's what's on your agenda tonight. First order of business, unless anybody has any questions about the remediation and the status of the work that needed to get done to get to this point.
I'll just make the comment that thank you for all the diligence in pursuing this and working with the professionals involved to be sure that the property is in the proper condition for us to acquire it without any concern or further issue.
It was a significant undertaking for a lot of people involved to get us to this point tonight. As you can imagine, it's taken a year to get here, so there was a lot of things that had to happen, but I'm just happy to say that it's gotten to this point, and it's pretty exciting at the moment to think that we're actually going to close and start to move forward with what we had envisioned at town meeting, you know, last year. So, with that, I guess, turn it over to June.
June Hubbard Ward, Finance Director. Hello, June.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as John indicated, you did take this vote before to advance the borrowing, the amount authorized, $1.7 million last year, since this vote was taken at the April 2016 town meeting to purchase the property to authorize this debt. You cannot advance funds beyond the end of a fiscal year, so that vote did expire, so that's why we're before you tonight, to get you to advance the funds in order to close on Wednesday. The vote was partially to borrow $1.7 million, but there was also CPA, Community Preservation Funds, and about $700,000 that were part of that Article 42 from that town meeting to acquire and preserve this property. So, the piece we're asking you to take a vote on tonight is just the advance in lieu of borrowing. Next spring, when we are in the market for bands and bonds, this will be permanently, you know, temporarily financed and ultimately permanently financed, but for now, in order to make these funds available, we need the selectmen to vote those internal advance.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? No questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute an advance in lieu of borrowing in the amount of $1.7 million for White Cliffs acquisition, as presented by Finance Director June Hubbard Ward.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, June.
I'll get you to sign this.
(laughing).
Oh, yes.
Great. Sit down, you end again. No, go ahead.
Don't.
No. Thank you, June. Thanks, June. And the next item?
In your packet was a copy of the deed, as approved by council. We do have a copy for your execution. My understanding in talking to council is, there's been a couple minor edits, nothing material, just going back and forth between the attorneys, but at this point, we'd ask you to accept and before you leave tonight, obviously, execute that deed to accept it.
Any discussion? Don?
I have a question, only because we just signed for $1.7 million, but the price in here is listed as $1.75.
Yes, the, that's the actual price. What we, so what we signed, as far as the advancement, as June had explained, is we agreed to bond $1.7. The overall project budget that was approved at town meeting was, I believe, $2.4 million. So, $1.7 of it was going to be debt, and the rest was going to come from other sources, CPC funding and so forth.
So, the net amount?
Right.
Is for the borrowing, is what?
We actually, in terms of the final, in terms of the final acquisition, it'll, or the final price that we have to provide to them and wire to them, it'll be $1.771,000, because it includes the $21,000 for the historic fixtures, if you recall, that they had sent to Skinner Auction Service. In order to break that contract, there was a penalty that they had to pay, and the town agreed to pay that to get the fixtures back, so, there was a couple of numbers moving around. The key here is, in terms of bonding, we're only going to bond $1.7 of the total acquisition price.
Very good. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
You do. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the quick claim deed for the White Cliffs acquisition, as approved by Town Council.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you. And finally.
So, now the fun part. The fun part where the town is going to decide, you know, how to move forward and what's the best and highest use for this particular property. So, what we've recommended, and I put a memo together, it's in your packet this evening, that has something for your consideration, but we obviously would form a committee, a White Cliffs reuse committee, and I drafted, and staff drafted a charge, which would basically have the committee exploring the long-term viability of the property and be involved in all phases of the process, including, and I'll just read the three primary bullets, hiring of consultants to establish baseline conditions and recommend work to document and secure the property and provide ongoing management in the near term. So, with that bullet, immediately, we need to secure the property and do an assessment of the building, which would require hiring of consultants, so that's the first thing that this group would be involved in, which would be hiring the necessary consultants to get a handle on what the building needs immediately to be secure. Next, working with town staff and consultants, assess the viability of use by the town or third party, and recommend the necessary steps needed for the project to move forward, such as zoning change or remedial work that will prepare the building for redevelopment by the town or make it more viable, a more viable asset for a new owner or a leasing. So, again, working with consultants and staff, start to figure out what's needed to move this building forward to the next stage. And then, last but not least, explore viable reuses relating to either the town owning and operating the building, the town owning the building and leasing it to a third party, either on a short-term or a long-term basis, or look at the sale of the asset to a proven user. So, really, the three things, as outlined in that bullet, are, either we find a municipal use for it, or we get it into a state where it can be leased, short-term or long-term, to a third-party person, or potentially, you know, the place can be, could be sold. And we haven't, we've sort of contemplated the whole gamut and range of possible options, but these are the things that, working with an architect and some historic preservationist consultants, we need to run through all that and come up with some options and some pros and cons, and the ultimate goal here is that this committee would come back and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that would ultimately be brought back for consideration at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting for whatever it is that we're going to do. So, that's a charge, it's, I think it's specific as it needs to be, but open enough and broad enough that allows, would allow a group to do what it needs to do to get to the next step. In terms of composition, what we're recommending is either a five- or seven-member committee. Three, three members that are specifically laid out are a member of the Board of Selectmen, representative from the Community Preservation Committee, and a representative from the Historic District Commission. And then, we're contemplating either two at-large members or four at-large members, and that's really up to the board's discretion tonight, and the reason for that is, with committees, you like to have odd numbers. Five, like you, is a good manageable number, or if there's so much interest, it could be seven, but again, an odd number, so that we don't run into, you know, tied votes and things of that nature, and frankly, any more than seven starts to become unwieldy to get consensus and move forward. And again, by and large, the bulk of the work of this committee is going to be hiring the appropriate consultants and experts to start to guide and frame the issue and start to make recommendations and give information back that then we can bring back to the board and ultimately, you know, the town. So, we don't need the folks on the committee to be the experts, but they're going to have a role in selecting those folks and providing a scope of services and what we want to get from them. So, again, rather than just put this on your agenda with no, with no outline, I think this is a pretty good, a pretty good charge and at least an initial take on what that committee might look like. But again, this is entirely, this is entirely up to the board, how you'd like to handle this. If you follow through on what's provided here, and again, the scope of service was in part provided by a historic preservationist, the consultant that had worked with us up to this point, so, you know, these are the things that he sees the committee needing to do. Also, the committee has at least proposed here in the motion that's before you, is, you know, it's a two-year assignment at most, and then we'll, at that point, we'll see if we need a different committee or if you want to continue it. So, there's a sunset, there's a goal and a deadline and a sunset. But again, this is for your consideration.
Comments, Bill?
Yes, I think the smaller the committee, the better, because being on the Apple Fest, the 250th Committee, we had nine members, Norm also sat on it, so it's difficult to get kind of like everybody on the same page at the same time, and people, you know, not always at the meetings, and, you know, you want to have a full group that's dedicated and that's going to push through, like John says, it could possibly be two years, so I'd throw my hat, my hat in the ring for a selectmen, but it's up to you guys.
Comments, Don?
I just feel kind of more comfortable with four members, only because I think there's such a huge interest in this, that I think that more input from people that aren't directly on a committee in town might be better, so, that's my two cents.
Leslie, any preference?
Not really, I guess it might depend on who applies. I think we kind of let it evolve from there, because I can see both of those points, I see Bill, your point too, because it is unwieldy to have a bigger group deciding, even deciding meeting dates, it can get kind of nuts, and then you have somebody who shows up for two, but misses the next three, and, you know, that kind of thing, but on the other hand, I do understand your point too, so.
I think we have to make a decision tonight.
Yeah.
If I may, through the chair, make a suggestion, you know, you may want to make the motion to have up to, up to four at-large, and then you can decide, the key here is, you really need either two or four. Three will give us, you know, six-member committee, which generally isn't a good idea, but you can say up to four, see what you get for applicants, and if you have four folks that you feel are going to add to the body, and you want to go in that direction, you can. Keep in mind too, at your next meeting, if you want to change this, you know, you can change it, but you need to, we need to start somewhere and, but I think if you took a vote up to four members and then see how it plays out in terms of what you get for an applicant pool, that would give you some flexibility.
I mean, that would satisfy me, I would think whether adding additional people would be more based in part on who the applicants are and what we feel that they can contribute to the process.
Absolutely.
But I don't think I want to commit to four just for fours sake. I would like to see the applications and see the interest. If that's satisfactory to the board? Yeah, okay. Any other concerns or questions, considerations for the composition of the committee? I just mentioned that Town Administrator and Town Planner are also members of the committee as non-voting members, so their expertise will be brought to bear on the effort. If there are no other questions or discussion, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to establish a White Cliffs committee with the charges outlined in the September 22, 2017 memorandum from the Town Administrator, and to present recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for consideration at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. The committee is convened for a period of up to two years, and members shall serve until such time as they are replaced or the committee is disbanded by vote of the Board of Selectmen. The committee will be comprised of the following representatives, a representative from the Board of Selectmen, a representative from the Community Preservation Committee, a representative from the Historic District Commission, up to four at-large members selected by the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Administrator and Town Planner, non-voting members.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Sorry, there is not discussion. All in favor? Very good, thank you.
So, in terms of moving forward with that, we'll contact, from my office, we'll send a message to the Community Preservation Committee, as well as the Historic District Commission, asking them for their designee, and then we'll place an ad in the typical places requesting anybody who's interested in serving to send an application to the board.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent.
Great. Billy, you've expressed interest in serving as the selectman's representative.
I would love to, but it's up to everybody else.
I would, I guess I would suggest deferring that to the next meeting.
Sure.
All members are present, and we can make that determination, but, yeah.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you very much, and now it's time for reports. Bill?
Yes. Two weekends ago, Apple Fest was a great, great weekend, from Friday night all the way into Sunday, there was a lot of events, I think the farmer's market was great on Saturday. They had a bunch of farmers and different, you know, people who made honey and all kinds of sauces, and different farm stands were there, plus they had an area with food trucks on the other side, and they had somebody playing music, it was great, a lot of people went, great, great event, the parade was great, fireworks were phenomenal, long, long. It was like, it seemed like it was about an hour and a half, but it was probably just about an hour, but they were great, everybody was satisfied. With all the events, I'm thinking that two days, you know, the Saturday and then the parade on Sunday with the street fair made more sense this week, you know, this past, well, two weekends ago, because there were so many events, to try to jam everything into one day, I think, is crazy, but, my opinion only, but it was a great time, great time, there was a lot of people, a lot of people were excited, and I think they, a lot of people liked the parade that was on Sunday and the street fair that I talked to during the event. This past Saturday, I attended Brian Arsenault's Second Annual Memorial Ride, we had over 200 bikes at the American Legion, it was a great event for a great cause, so, ends my report.
Don?
Okay. Last Monday, we all had the opportunity to go to hear the composting hearing, Senator Chandler did a great job of presenting it and framing the legislation. I felt the residents, the boards, and the health inspector, and John, all did a great job of presenting our case. I did feel like that three minutes was used really well on us, but it wasn't used quite as well when the negatives were talking, but I think they got more than their three minutes every time. John, when can we expect to hear? Do they give any indication?
Yeah, you know, that question was posed to Senator Chandler after the, after the hearing, and she indicated that it really, it's really up to the committee, so she wasn't sure, sometimes it could be, it could be a matter of a couple of weeks or months, or it can take longer, it's really their own internal process, we don't know, but she was going to continue to follow up with Chairman Gobi to hopefully get it reported out, so it can get into the legislature for debate.
Is there anything that we can do to help move it along?
No, at this point, it's in the hands of the committee members, and our legislative delegation knows that it's an important issue to the town, and they're asking about it and when it might get reported out, so that's really the extent of what we can do.
Now, the committee visited the site, did we get any feedback on that?
I have not gotten any feedback on that, no.
Okay. All right, well, I was glad to see Senator Chandler there, I wish our other representatives and senators would have been there also. It was kind of disappointing, although I know some don't represent that particular site in Northborough, it's still something that could happen all over the state or in their own half, the other half of Northborough too, so, just wishing they would have been there. The fire department, the building committee, where are we at with that?
We are trying to get the RFP out on the street right now, had a discussion with the fire chief, one of the aspects of the project is to look at alternate sites, so working with the town planner and the fire chief, we're trying to identify those alternate sites, so that as part of the RFP, we can frame up for the consultant what exactly we're asking them to look at. So, I anticipate us getting together within the next few weeks for at least an initial meeting.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Apple Fest was a success, everybody has had really good things to say about it. It seemed to go pretty smoothly, I know there were a couple incidents with picnic tables, so hopefully, that can be remedied for next year, so, but other than that, all sounded good, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Don. Leslie?
Also, I agree with what Don said, I think Senator Chandler did do a very good job, and I also want to applaud the residents who were there, there were several, and they did a very nice job speaking, putting together their thoughts, they were very succinct, they did, they said what they needed to say, I think it was very heartfelt, and I think they realized that that was the time to say it. Those are the people that needed to hear their concerns, and now it's in committee, and we have to wait for it to come out of committee, it's the last thing that I heard from Senator Chandler, so, but they, I'm very happy with the residents who, I mean, they obviously had to take off work and prepare something, and I don't think that's an easy thing to do when you're not used to doing that all the time, so, I'm very, very happy that they were there. I want to thank them very much. Also, I want to refer to Chief Liver's September 8 police report, just mentioned a couple personnel items that were in there that were of interest. Officer Brendan Wohler completed his 10-week field training, so that's all, a done deal with him, correct?
(inaudible).
That's great, and we're very happy-
they realized that that was the time to say it. Those are the people that needed to hear their concerns. And now it's in committee. And we have to wait for it to come out of committee. It's the last thing that I heard from Senator Chandler. So, but they, I'm very happy with the residents who, I mean, they obviously had to take off work and prepare something. And I don't think that's an easy thing to do when you're not used to doing that all the time. So I'm very, very happy that they were there. I want to thank them very much. Also, I want to refer to Chief Liver's September 8 police report. Just mentioned a couple personnel items that were in there that were of interest. Officer Brendan Wohler completed his 10-week field training. So that's all, a done deal with him, correct?
All right, so.
That's great. We're very happy about that.
Yeah.
Excellent. We'll be at full, full sworn strength for the first time in several years, is what you'd said. Yes. So, that's good news. We have a new dispatcher. We have hired Vance Huntoun to fill one of the two open dispatch positions. So we're very happy about that. He has an interesting background. It sounds like he, he'll be, this new endeavor for him?
He's doing very well.
Good.
He starts the 911 Dispatch Academy on Monday.
Okay.
And then we have interviews on Friday to try to fill the last position.
Okay. Wonderful. That's great news too. And the last thing I wanted to mention was Officer Kyle Crew. And this I'm going to read because this is a little lengthy description and I think what you said was great about it. Officer Kyle Crew was notified that he had successfully passed the extremely intense entrance requirements to secure a position on the C E M L E C Emergency Response Team. C E M L E C is the Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. This is a shared resource mutual aid response council providing motorcycle units, crash reconstruction teams, ERT, SWAT, and K-9 teams for Worcester County communities. Increasing our participation in C E M L E C unit was one of our FY18 goals. So, that's excellent news as well. So, thank you for including that in your report. Also, I just wanted to mention too, the Northborough Food Pantry. I think what was great is that the, some of the people who are running the food pantry are, have been posting pictures on Facebook of the shelves, which look pretty bare at this point. And I think that, you know, if residents, maybe when they're grocery shopping, just put NFP on your list. And when you get to the grocery store, look up, you know, NF, NFpantry.org and, or the Facebook page. And you can see a listing there of, of the things that are needed. It's a very easy drop-off there on Pierce Street. So I really encourage people to, to think about that even just a few things, toilet paper, dried goods, canned goods, and things like that. Very, very important. But those pictures spoke a thousand words, I thought. So. And the last thing is, I wanted to ask a question about the Collins and Ridge stop sign that was discussed, I think, two meetings ago.
Yep.
I meant to drive by there today. Is there a stop sign there now?
Yes.
There is?
It's installed.
Okay. There wasn't one before?
Well, I think.
I thought there was one because I was stopped.
I can tell you what happened because, because I live, I live on Ridge and I drive Collins and Ridge every day.
Yeah.
And so we had a traffic and safety meeting with all of the public safety folks. We had a lengthy discussion. And Fred Litchfield, the town engineer, had done the background research to see if there was a stop sign there. I was adamant that there was a stop sign there. I've lived there for 17 years. And there was a stop sign and then there wasn't. And, and the town engineer was pretty clear based on the research that the board never authorized a stop sign at that location. But then I know Chief Liver knew and had a recollection that there was a stop sign there as well. What we think happened is a previous DPW director just installed a stop sign because one was needed there, but didn't go through the appropriate process. So, so that's what we believe transpired. What happened to the stop sign in the interim is anybody's guess. We don't know if it got hit in an accident or it was taken. But, but in any event, the board voted through the appropriate process to put a stop sign there. And within a matter of days of your vote, it was installed, including a sign warning folks that there's a stop ahead. So as of yesterday, driving through there, because I drove there yesterday, it was there and working swimmingly. So.
That's great.
I actually heard from a couple neighbors that they were glad to see the stop sign back up. So I was glad, I thought I was having a little mental issue when I was insisting that there was a stop sign there. But the record showed that there was never one that was appropriately and correctly approved.
Okay. I couldn't be here for that discussion. But what, one comment I want to make about that is, in an ideal world, if it was up to me, I would love it if it was a three-way stop. Because in the wintertime, or if you're driving a stick shift, that is a terrible little hill to be stuck on. And I know my kids have all had problems on that hill and so forth in the past. But also thinking about Ridge Road and the fact that it can, you know, people kind of speed down through there because it's a pretty long time before you hit a stop sign. So I, you know, I hope that that works. It's, it's a logical decision, but it's not the greatest hill to have to stop on. That's all I can say.
I would just say what your suggestion, although it may seem logical, all stop signs, is something called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Basically, it's federal standards.
Yeah.
And state standards for how stop signs can get approved. We have suggestions a lot of times at an intersection that there be a four-way stop. Well, four-way stops aren't actually legal. They're only legal as a temporary measure to put a traffic signal in. What you're suggesting wouldn't meet the warrants and be, and be legal either. It's appropriate that Collins receive the stop sign. That's the intersecting road. Ridge is clearly the through road in that situation. And keep in mind that we've gone years without any stop sign there and we haven't had any, any accidents. I'm hoping a stop sign will only improve things, make them a little bit, a little bit safer. But so far, everything seems to be working quite well.
Thank you. That is my report.
Okay. Couple things for me. I regret that I was unable to attend the, the hearing on September 18th for agricultural composting due to a work travel commitment. I want to thank the members of the board for their appearance and for Jeff Amberson for presenting the board's testimony. Thank John for his assistance and all of the efforts he's made on this issue. And I want to thank all the residents who were able to attend the hearing and present their testimony and try to make the point that there's an issue here that needs to be corrected. And we do need help from the state legislature to do that. So appreciate all the input that everyone provided and the time they took out of their day to be there for it. The second thing I want to touch upon, just add my congratulations on successful Apple Fest weekend. Packed with many events, some pretty good weather throughout. And I want to thank Michelle Gillespie and the Apple Fest Committee for all the work that they do to make all the preparations each year. Thank police, fire, and DPW, all the work you guys put into it to make everything, all the preparations leading up to it. And then all the supervision throughout the, the weekend. It's a lot of hours for you guys. We appreciate everything that they do. And just finally, congratulate Jerry Bork, Grand Marshal. Well-deserved honor. I just appreciate that he was selected this year because I think he's a very apt choice for this kind of honor. So. And then finally, yesterday, I put in a brief appearance at the cornhole tournament held at Texas Barbecue. This is a tournament to raise money for the Fidrich Foundation and in particular, the support of the Challenger Sports Program for special needs kids. I want to thank the Brandon family who made the Texas barbecue site available for this event to take place. It's the third, third year in a row that we've conducted this. Jim Furlong and Sean Durkin are tireless contributors to organizing this event. So thank you to them and to the many volunteers who come out to organize the tournament, to do the food preparation and service and everything. And it was just a very hot, hot day. Also, one, one mention, I believe it was Kevin Mullen who arranged to have a large screen TV mounted on the outside of Texas Barbecue so that no one had to worry about missing any part of the Patriots game. So they were able to, to enjoy that while they were playing in the tournament. So, an excellent job. That concludes my report. John?
No report this evening?
Okay.
Public comment time? Anybody in the audience have any public comments they'd like to offer? Yes?
I have a question about White Cliffs.
Can, can you please come up and just state your name and address, please, for the record? Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Julianne Hirsch. I live on Smith Road in Northborough. So, back to White Cliffs. And I think Mrs. Rand commented that there was a lot of citizen interest in, in preserving that building.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? I was wondering if at least as the ideas are thrown around, if you would consider making those meetings quite public? In other words, you know, people who have ideas and about the property or the gardens or the building could, that the, that the, at least the initial meetings be for anyone who come, would like to offer ideas?
I, I mean, I could comment, I guess. So we have a few avenues. One is that there are some at-large memberships available for people to apply if they do have a strong interest. And they certainly can participate in, in the committee. The second thing is, with that composition of the committee, I'm sure that the committee would be available to take input. It wouldn't necessarily be in the context of the committee meeting, like a public comment period or something like that. But I'm sure, I'm sure that the committee would like to invite input from the public to get some ideas. And that makes a lot of sense. So I wouldn't imagine there's any objection to that. As far as conducting the meetings as public meetings, is that?
Yeah. As a, as a town sanctioned committee, all, all meetings would be public. They'd be posted and anybody could attend. It doesn't mean they're a public hearing. You don't necessarily get to speak at them, just like this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But it would be open. And as part of the process and work that the committee would do, I think they would need to choose some specific times where they'll need to engage the public. And I think it starts with getting some basic information and then engaging the public. Certainly as we get to the point where they start framing the issue with possible uses and the direction they're going to go, that would naturally require some public input. I would just use a similar process we use with the library project, the senior center, Lincoln Street. We held numerous, the committee held numerous public input sessions where they provided information, specifically held meetings to take, to take comments and input.
Mm-hmm.
So I would, I would envision that being the case here.
Great. Thank you. Because it's such an asset to the town. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for your comment. Any comments by anyone else?
What?
Okay. Proceeding. New business. Discussion of preliminary free cash plan?
Thank you. We're at a very interesting juncture with regard to our finances in the town. We have, we had closed out fiscal 17 and, and we have the results of that this evening. We've begun fiscal 18, the year that started July 1. And as you're aware from my emails, we actually have sent out budget manuals and begun planning for fiscal 19. So forgive me if I get confused because I'm working in three fiscal years at the same time. The auditors are here. I understand, my understanding is they're wrapping up their work this week in terms of the fiscal 17 audit. But one of the first things that comes out of the closure of the previous fiscal year, which in this case is 17, is our certified free cash. Free cash, as you well know, is essentially revenues that come in higher than forecast and expenditures that come in lower than what was budgeted, combined with whatever money we had left over from the previous year. That's essentially our free cash. I, I use this warning every year. I'm from Connecticut. And if you travel anywhere around the country in the finance realm, they think that calling something free cash is the most ridiculous thing they've ever heard. It's neither free nor is it cash. It's unreserved, undesignated fund balance. That's what the, the financial world refers to it as. But the positive thing is we closed out fiscal 17. And, and I'm very pleased to report, we did so in a, in a positive nature. We have approximately $2.8 million in free cash from fiscal 17. Now, what we try to strive for is to have our revenues come in 2% to 3% higher than what we forecast and have our expenditures come in 2% to 3% lower than we budgeted. Because quite frankly, to be any more precise than that is impossible. And I don't care what anybody tells you. It is not possible. So the state tells you on an annual basis, you want to have 4% to 6% in free cash as a general target. Remember now, we can have, we want to finish the year in a positive way. You cannot finish the year in a negative way. That would be very, very bad. So we have approximately $2.8 million in free cash. Keep in mind, as part of that figure, $732,000 was from, was already in the account from the previous year. We hadn't expended it. So it's not like we generated that. And as you know, from a couple of meetings ago, we closed out a few accounts. We closed out the Avalon Bay Loop mitigation account, which is $248,000. And, and we've had some very, we've hired some frugal department heads. And one of them is sitting in the audience right now, and that's Fire Chief Parente, who had $688,000 to work with for a new engine and, and turned back $68,000 roughly on that project by using existing equipment. He felt that we didn't need to spend it. And I think that's one of the things that I always make a point of this time of year when I'm talking about our budget surplus from closing out the year, is our department heads don't spend it because it's there. And they're not afraid to return money if they're able to get a grant or find a way to save money. Because they know that they're going to ask for what, you know, they're going to ask for what they need. And they're only going to spend what, what they, what they have to. They're not afraid to turn back money if things transpire to be more positive. So, so again, I'm very pleased. I'll just remind folks too, every year, the auditor comes in. The auditor will be coming in this year at one of your meetings over there, probably sometime in November. And one of the things that he always talks about is our revenue and expenditure estimates. And he's, and he says, he shows you a five or seven-year history. And he always says, you guys are exactly where you should be. Your textbook's spot on where you need to be. This year, frankly, is, is no different. Now, under our policy in fiscal 10, we have a free cash policy. Some communities, we were one of these communities many years ago, will use this budget surplus and roll right forward into the next fiscal year. We all know that creates a structural deficit. And you can get yourself in trouble, like we did many years ago before the recession. So our, our free cash policy limits what we can use these one-time revenues for. And essentially, essentially, it's four or five things. We use it to fund the emergency reserve account that the appropriations committee controls. We limit the amount moved forward into the operating budget to $500,000, which is roughly 1%. Again, we have to have conservative estimates. So we automatically roll a conservative amount forward. When you look back many years, we used over $1 million of one-time revenues in our operating budget. That's a practice that we got away from because it's not a sound financial practice. And now we're in, we've held this policy in place. And we've hit that target since fiscal 12. So that's been great. The big use of free cash is the third item, and that is for capital, capital projects. Instead of bonding and financing things like pickup trucks and equipment, we pay cash for a lot of those small items. We still bond for large projects like fire stations or schools. But we have been very successful in using our budget surplus each year to make regular and consistent investments in our, in our capital. And that's why our equipment's in good shape, our buildings are in good shape, even our roads. We've used the money to invest $300,000 a year in free cash to keep our, to go towards our 1.1 million in roads. The other thing that we, we typically do is contribute to our stabilization fund, which is essentially a town savings account. Just like in your personal life, you should have a certain amount of financial reserves. And our policy is to have 5% to 10% of our budget in reserves. That's a good place to be. And then last but not least, would be extraordinary deficits and emergency appropriations. We have a storm or something like that. So under our policy, I'm actually required at this point to bring a preliminary plan to you for consideration. This evening, you don't need to vote on the plan. It's not set in stone. It's, we have the number. And I'm just sort of, this is how, right now, it would look like we would spend it. So we'd have $2.8 million. We'd put 175, as we do every year, into the emergency reserve account that the appropriation committee controls. We put $500,000 towards the operating budget for fiscal 19. We contribute $200,000 to our stabilization fund, keep our reserves at about 8% in accordance with our policy. And then last but not least, that would give us about $1.5 million to invest in capital projects this year. We have not issued hardly any general fund, non-debt excluded debt since fiscal 12. I think we, we issued $1 million for the Church Street project, which is a $2 million project. We paid cash for half of that. All the equipment and investments, including the roadwork that we've done, it's all been on a page. You go. on a pay-as-you-go basis. When we go out to bond, and you heard the finance director who was here earlier tonight talking about, we'll be out bonding for some water and sewer projects in the spring. One of the things that the bond rating agencies are absolutely thrilled with is, is that we don't issue debt for small projects, that we have our policies in place and we are, we plan well enough that we're able to pay as we go for that. I always draw the analogy of, it's like in your personal life, if a washer or dryer breaks, you can put it on the credit card, but if you're in good shape financially, something like that, you'd want to pay cash for. You know, you might have to finance a roof, but, but for us, a pickup truck is the equivalent of a washer or dryer. And if we're planning well, we should be able to pay cash for those things and save the financing for big things like a mortgage and, and a vehicle or something like that. So the other thing that we do, because again, our plan is, is conservative, is we always leave at least a half a million dollars of free cash, undesignedated and, and not expended. And the reason for that is if something happens in the next fiscal year where the world economy goes crazy again and we have all kinds of problems, we know that we have at least the same amount of money that we're putting into the fiscal 19 budget available for fiscal 20. So we're giving ourselves two fiscal years to figure out how to make that money up. So it's a relatively small amount and we're building in belts and suspenders. So this is virtually the same approach and the same preliminary free cash plan that you've seen since fiscal 12. I think most of you think that this works extremely well. I know the staff does. And again, the bond rating agencies really, really like this approach. The reason why this is preliminary, excuse me. The reason why this is preliminary at this point is the financial planning committee needs to meet and go through the capital projects. Well, we have 1.5 million under this plan, but we may not have 1.5 million in projects that are ready to be funded right now. So these numbers might change a little bit, but in general, this is, this is the approach that we're going to, we're going to recommend. Also, all of this plan is subject to town meeting. So I'm giving you a preliminary snapshot of, this is how we close out the fiscal year. We're, we're showing you how we think it ought to be used moving forward. Ultimately, who decides all this is town meeting. So, so this plan gets incorporated to various warrant articles, including the capital, and, and goes to town meeting for, for their approval. So, so that's where we are tonight. I do also want to point out that attached to the cover memo is a, is a document that I update every year and it says, introduction to Northborough's free cash policy. Because we have people on the various boards and committees that come and go and you were all around and took part, every one of you voted for that fiscal 2010 policy. And, but we have new people on boards and committees. So this document, it's in a question and answer format, so it tells us what is free cash, why are they considered one-time revenues, what's the difference between a free cash policy and the plan, what are the acceptable uses of free cash, and why do we adopt the policy and what are the benefits of adopting that policy? So this is available to anybody who wants to see it, but we distribute this to all the financial boards and committees and it gives a lot of historical information. And we also have a chart regarding our free cash that goes all the way back to 1990, which in 1990, '91, and '92, it was negative, which is not where you ever want to be. As you can see here, that free cash bounces around and it's largely driven by things that we don't control. It's just general economic cycles. And, and that has a lot to do with what we generate for free cash, which is why it is not predictable, nor is it stable. And that's why it's considered, under our financial trend monitoring report, it's considered a one-time, a one-time revenue. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. Again, I know you've all seen this before. The takeaways here are, we finished the year at an appropriately positive level and that's going to allow us to move forward funding the fiscal 19 budget and to invest in our capital at the same level that we've been able to do for the last several years. So all in all, this is very positive news.
Thank you, John. Comments from the committee? Leslie?
Can I ask? John, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's wonderful. That's a great document. A quick question about the certified free cash chart.
Yes.
Over the last three fiscal years, there's been a slight downward trend.
Yep.
Do you have any concerns?
No, that's, that's anticipated and I think moving forward, it's going to continue to, to trend down. And there's a few reasons for that. One is, you know, we've closed out, we're going to get back more to historic levels. We've had a little bit of artificially high free cash for a couple of years because we've had things like significant mitigation funds from large projects. We've closed out things like, like the police department's revolving fund based on the Department of Revenue's recommendation for tickets. And, you know, so we've, we've absorbed a lot of these truly one-time funds that have, have caused these numbers to go up. The other thing that's going to contribute to it is I see for the last several years, a trend that's going to continue in fiscal 19, and that is that budgets are getting tighter. And a big part from the operating budget of what gets turned back, you tend to see small amounts of money from each department and generally, it's where they've had personnel turnover. Someone leaves, it takes a little time to, to fill that vacancy. It could take three to six months depending on the position. That's the money that gets turned back and then a little bit more from, you know, from the expenditure lines. But the source of a lot of the turnbacks are in the centralized budgeting accounts, things like for gasoline and diesel. Well, gas and diesel was $4 and then when it drops down, you know, you don't know what's going to happen, so you always want to make sure you have a little cushion. That turns back. Our health insurance, we have had extremely good, extremely good experience with the health insurance. 2.5 or 2.6% annual budget increases for seven, eight years running. Well, last year, our renewals came in at 14% and our overall budget was at 8%. So that means, you know, we budget for, I don't want to say the worst, but we budget and then for, for something that's reasonable and then we try to get those numbers in as tightly as we can. Well, all those centralized accounts are getting tighter. Our insurance lines are getting tighter, our, our pension lines are getting tighter, our health insurance, particularly the benefits are getting tighter. And the rest of the departments, you know, they'll turn back what they can, but you know, it's, it's not a lot of money. So I see that trend coming down. The other thing too is as, as we get pressure in our budgets, you're not seeing significant increase in state aid, right? State aid on averages for us has gone up a little over 1.5% or 2%. Our overall budgets are going up 3.5%, 4%. So, so what you're seeing is, and again, new growth, we're at a 16, 17-year low in terms of, you know, new growth, big development. So you're seeing the revenues getting tighter, you're seeing the operating budgets getting tighter, and that means when you finish the year, it's going to be, it's going to be tighter. So just, so just to kind of back up again, we had a lot of true one-time significant revenues close out over the last couple of years. That's all gone. That's not going to replicate. Revenues and expenditures are going to continue to get tighter and so your operating budget at the year end is going to continue to get, to get tighter. And I, you're going to see us, you know, if you look at these numbers, you're going to see us dropping back down to more of a historic level. And again, we're going to need to be conservative enough that we make sure that we finish the year in the black. But you keep hoping that state aid's going to turn back, that we're going to start seeing some new development. I think the, the hardest thing for people to get used to in the municipal finance world is, you know, we, we remember the good times, we remember the bad times, right? There's these economic cycles. Well, we're in this very long, protracted phase coming out of this recession where I wouldn't go so far to say is there bad times, but I don't know that the really good times are coming back. This is almost the new norm, this operating under sort of a chronic fiscal constraint, which just means that we need to plan accordingly and make sure that we live within our means. And I know that's a tough message, but, but, you know, we have to make sure that we don't grow our staff too fast. You know, we've been very diligent in the way we've added public safety staff. We agree that we needed it, but we've added it in a way that we know we're going to be able to reasonably sustain it. But that's going to be a trend. I, I say barring any really big unforeseen one-time revenue coming in, you're going to see that, that continue to trend down. And so it's, it's not, it's anticipated and we understand why, but somewhere along the lines, I hope that, yeah, we'll see some big economic development, we'll start to see revenues kind of come back. Because the big, the big, the big impact of what you see with all these trends is if revenues aren't growing and state aid isn't growing and the town from an economic development standpoint isn't growing, the one thing that will grow is, is the tax impact. And that's something that this board and my staff is very cognizant of, that we try to manage that number and that impact in a way that we believe is truly sustainable in the long run. So it's a balancing act and there's a lot of moving pieces, but, but yes, that's why we, that's why this, I mean, this is a trend from 1990 to 2017. That's why every December, you get a very thorough presentation of all the key fiscal indicators and the trends looking back 10 years and forecasting for five years. So you see and know what we see and know because people are going to ask you for your policy decisions on things and, and of course, they're going to give you their opinions on the tax impact. So it's important that everybody understand what these trends look like and what they translate into for the residents. But I will say, I think all the boards and committees are very sensitive to that and taking a very disciplined and diligent approach. But it's just going to continue to get tighter. That's what we're seeing. And I don't see anything, as I look forward for the next three years, I don't see anything changing. It's just going to continue to be tighter, which means we just need to manage ourselves really well and be disciplined. That's probably a much longer answer than you were looking for, but.
Very interesting.
Look, this stuff, and I know you know this, this stuff, all, it's all in, relates to each other and it's, ultimately, it's about balancing everything.
Yes. Thank you, John.
The good news is that we have that planning and management, those practices and policies in place. I recall back in 2010, the other members here were already on the Board of Select and I was on the financial planning committee. And the financial policies we were reviewing at that time, the free cash policy, I think, was the thing that really got the most attention. I know that the Chair of the Appropriations Committee, Elaine Kelly, and the members of that committee were very focused on that and gave it, it was certainly welcomed by the committee members and I think it's been basically the biggest success story in Northborough's financial operation over the last 10 years roughly. I mean, that transition.
Yep.
Has been very pronounced since those policies were adopted, reducing our debt burden, reducing our debt service, improving our bond rating as a consequence of that.
Yes.
It's been a kind of a leveraging effect there as a result of, of having adopted these policies. So very pleased with the results we've seen so far and we know we have the right tools in place to manage it going forward, even under constrained fiscal circumstances. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding cash policy? Any other business to come before the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move re-turn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Excellent. We are concluded.